Amen. Reba liya ka dooshe, te liya ka ba dooshe. Re de booshe, te liya ka ba daaya. Fa ta yutze booshe, yutze pa to tabi oli. Reba liya ka dooshe, te liya na. Amen, ame, ame. Amen, ame.
Amen.
Amen, ame.
Amen.
Amen, ame.
Jesus. Thank you Lord. Thank you Lord, thank you Jesus. We worship you Father. We give all the praise of mighty God. We exalt your name Jesus. Thank you Holy Spirit. Thank you Father. Thank you Jesus. Reba ya masakata ya ma de. Reba ba ya ma kata ya ma se te re bo. Re ka ya ma te re bo shi ya ma sakata ya ma. Thank you Lord, thank you Jesus. We exalt your name oh Lord Jesus. We lift your name on high. Father, we bless your name. Father, we lift your name on high. Father, we exalt your name. We give you honor, we give you praise. Aba Father, we worship you. Aba Father, we worship you. Aba Father, we exalt your name. Oh ya basakata ya ma de. Reba ba ya ma kata ya ma si kata ya ma. Reba ba ya ma si kata ya ma ayah. Oh ya ba se te re bo shi kata ya ma ha.
In my midst, I worship you.
Oh Lord.
I worship you. You are here.
Yes Lord.
Touching every life.
Every life.
I worship you. I worship you.
Waymaker, miracle worker. Promise keeper, light in the darkness. That is who you are.
You are the waymaker.
Waymaker, miracle worker. Promise keeper, light in the darkness. That is who you are.
You are, you are, you are, you are.
Waymaker, miracle worker. Promise keeper, light in the darkness. That is who you are. Waymaker, miracle worker.
You are the promise keeper.
Light in the darkness. That is who you are.
You are, you are, you are.
Waymaker, miracle worker.
You are the promise keeper.
Light in the darkness. That is who you are.
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 Waymaker, miracle worker. Promise keeper. Light in the darkness. That is who you are.
That is who you are.
Waymaker, miracle worker. Promise keeper. Light in the darkness. That is who you are.
That is who you are.
Waymaker, miracle worker. Promise keeper. Light in the darkness. That is who you are.
Jesus. Thank you Father, you are the waymaker.
The Lord who makes miracles. The Lord of wonders. The Lord who will ever be the Lord. We come before your throne tonight. We call upon your presence as we enter into this earth. Oh my God, as we start this day tonight, we say we need your wonders. We need your miracles to work tonight. Hallelujah. Good evening, our viewers all over the world in the house at large. Tonight we have day number six of JPN series. Ah, tonight the theme we have is instant miracles. Your life is good things that need God. Your life is good some issues that need to be addressed like now. They need something to be sorted like now. There is the situation that you have been wondering with for years. You have been suffering with this financial setback for years, for decades. But tonight is the day where your miracle is. Your children is giving you stress day in, day out. But tonight is the night where your instant miracle is. Your husband has been seeking around and seeking around. But tonight is where the disaster is going to be addressed. Tonight is the night where your sickness is going to save no more. Tonight is the night when everything that you have been wishing for the Lord to address, this is the night for your answers to be in your head. Tonight in this studio, I am with none other than the men of God. Can everyone lift up those holy hands tonight? Can we lift up those holy hands tonight as we welcome Pastor Rod in the house? Good evening Pastor, and how are you?
I'm great and strong. I am great and strong. Lift up those holy hands.
Oh yes, hallelujah.
Welcome to Mount Zion.
Amen.
Welcome to the day of instant miracles.
Ah, yes.
The Bible says, but you have come to Mount Zion.
Yes.
Where the Bible also says, upon Mount Zion they shall be delivered and the children shall possess their possessions. Welcome to the night of instant miracles.
Oh yes.
I love Joel too. It says, it says blow the trumpet in Zion and sound an alarm on this mountain. A people, number two says, a people will come great and strong. Tonight is the night of instant miracles.
Oh yes.
Instant results.
Yes.
Instant, instant, the sick will be healed, the blind will see, the lame will walk, the jobless will receive emails tonight.
Oh yes.
In the name of Jesus.
Hallelujah. You know, let us stand our Bibles in 2 Kings, chapter number two. 2 Kings, chapter number two. Verse number nineteen, I shall start reading as they are projecting it. And the man of the city, verse number nineteen I mean. And the man of the city said unto Elisha, Behold, I pray thee, the situation of the city is pleasant and as my lord saith, but the waters are not. And I see it, the waters are bitter and the ground is barren. That is someone's situation tonight. Your life might be barren, but you are here at Joel, chapter number two, verse two. You will rise up from today mighty and strong. Verse number twenty then reads. And he said, bring me a new grose and put salt therein. And they brought it to him, and he went forth and sprang it out of the waters and cast the salt in there and said, thus saith the Lord, I have healed these waters, and there shall not be from hence any more death and barrenness in the land. For so, tonight is the night when we must know that there is a grose. But she knew there is a bucket that is coming tonight. The bucket of strength, the bucket of miracles, the soldier of grace is here tonight as the praise and worship team is gonna lead us in a song. We wanna go before the Lord and say, God, bring enough salt for my situation. Hallelujah. Praise and worship team, can you lead us in a song?
We lay our crown and worship you. Hallelujah. We lay our crown and worship you.
Oh yes.
We lay our crown.
We lay our crown.
Yes, we worship you. Father, we lay our crown.
We lay our crown.
We worship you. We lay, we lay our crown.
We lay our crown.
We lay our crown.
We worship you.
We lay, we lay, we lay.
We lay our crown. We worship you.
If we did, we lay our lives before you. We come to you oh God. As we are calling upon your name, as we are calling upon your praises, as we are calling upon your name, my God. Our situations have been dire, our problems have been drastic and tense. But tonight, tonight God, we need praise. And you say, someone is by a true judgment of fire. Oh, reke teke bo saja. Mama, tonight, 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 we need enough praise. Savis and viva. Oh, raka ta bo saja. Mama, ma de wa ya. We cannot stand if you don't strengthen us. We cannot stand if you don't strengthen us. We cannot fall upon anything else, but you are the Lord who we are such saved. Ah, raka ta ka bo saja. Reke teke teke bo siman. Yeah, 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 yeah. Can you raise your voice? Can you raise your voice and say? Can you raise your voice and call unto the Father? Can you say, God, I live a life for you. I live a life before you because God, you are the water. You can do wonders. Oh, reke teke. Oh, ya ka za ka. Riya ta ka bo siman. Tonight, my God, I need you to go back home this time. I need you, God, to judge it. I need you, God, to judge my situation. Can you call upon the name of the Father? Can you call the name when it comes up tonight? And say, God, enough is enough. My situation is better than that. My situation has been wrong. My situation has been bad. But tonight I need your miracle. My health has been wrong. My problems are so big, but tonight. Oh, yeke teke teke. Ah, raka ta ka bo saja. Riya ta ka bo siman. Thank you Jesus. Oh, reke teke teke. Can we call unto the name of the Father? Can we call unto the name of the Father? Can you tell God that tonight I need enough praise? I need a new day. I need a new season. I need a new life. It's the name of Jesus. It's the name of Jesus. Oh, reke teke bo saja. Oh, reke teke bo siman. Raka ta ka ta ka ta. Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, 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 oh. Baba ra ta teke. Riya ta ka bo saja. Riya ra ka bo riyeke. Ayah, 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 ayah. Baba, 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 baba. Ma si ja ma si ja ba. Ma si ja ma si ja bo saja. For today, we shall not go back home this day. We shall not go back home this day. Oh, reke teke bo saja. Oh, reke teke bo saja. Riya ta ka bo siman. Ra ta ta ka ta ka bo saja. Riya ta ka bo siman. Oh, ya, 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 ya. Oh, ya, 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 ya. Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, reke teke teke. The Lord I have known with the name, with the pity, with the mercy. I call your name tonight. I call your name tonight. I call your name tonight. Oh, your name is good one. For your name is the miracle here. Oh, Lord, thank you Jesus. Ah, raka ta ka ta ka. Yehre re re re. Ro ko ne ko bo siman. Ma si ja ba. Ye ka ta ka bo siman. I have been in jail for too long. I have been in prison. I have been in jail for too long. I have been in prison for too long. But tonight I need your miracle. But tonight I need your miracle. Tonight I need your miracle, God. It's the name of Jesus. It's the name of Jesus. It's the name of Jesus. Oh, reke teke teke. Oh, ya ka za ka. Riyeke teke bo saja. Yehre re re re. Oh, raka ta ka bo siman. Sa ja bo siman. Yehre re re re. Ma bo di bo na sa. Ma ri ja ma ri ja ba. Ma e ro bi ro si ja. The Lord who we are saved. The Lord who we have.
Your mercy over our judgment. Your mercy over our judgment. It's not by mighty, it's not by power. It's by your mercy in the name of Jesus. You say, I will have mercy on whom I will.
Yes, you say it your way. Who are now the robabel? Who are now the robabel?
Satisfy us early, early with your mercy, with your mercy in the name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus.
Riya ta ka. Yehre ra ka ta bayah. Yehri ko tiande reba. Zeh le ke de. Man ko koo siande. Ri ka teande araba sande. Man ku po sa rianda. Satisfy us early, early with your mercy, with your mercy in the name of Jesus. Ra ba da ba. Ra ba da ba da. Ra ba da ba da ba. Re ka cha cha. Re ka cha cha cha. Re ka cha cha cha. Reke se reba siada. Early, satisfy us early, satisfy us early. You say in your prayers, I will have mercy on whom I will have mercy. Yehre ra ka sianda. Have mercy, have mercy, have mercy on us in the name of Jesus. Men of God.
Yes, sir.
Tonight as we are continuing with this thing, I remember and I like the book of Kings so much. Chapter number four of 2 Kings. The man of God was moving around the city and he met a widow. His sons were being taken because the father died owing. We are a lot of people here tonight. Our lives are owing.
Yes.
Our lives are owing maybe some deities that our families have joined. Some people, their lives are even kept in some bags somewhere. We were met like cartoons somehow. But the man of God, when he arrives, the woman did not keep quiet.
Yes.
He said, Allah, my Lord, I beseech thee. Your made servants is a widow. Make your request, make known that your situation is a widow. It needs someone who is going to protect you. This widow was owing. Go and look for containers. What do you have in the house? I've got but a little oil. So tonight, as JP and host, we have got the servants of the Lord who are going to be with us tonight. Who are coming with the extra containers. Who are going to pour oil out of those containers. Because someone online, you have cried unto the Lord and said, my life is a widow. I need someone to provide. My life is owing. I need someone to pay my debt. My situation is dire. I need the man of God to speak a word. What do you have to say, men of God?
Men of God, I thank you so much. And she said, I only have a jar of oil. And the Bible says, anointing breaks yokes. We have great men of God who are with us tonight.
Oh yes.
They with the great anointing to break that yokes, that yoke. And that yoke might be yoke of barrenness, yoke of limitation, yoke of limitation. Tonight it will be broken by the anointing. The same anointing that was shared that the man of God sent the woman to get more jars to so that she would have that oil, it is here.
Oh yes. So can we rise up on our feet in the house tonight? Can we rise up on our feet tonight? We wanna continue with the worship song tonight. As we are preparing ourselves, this song is going to lead us to go and carry containers that will contain the oil. But the servants of God are gonna, are gonna pour in our jars tonight. The jars that are going to be sold out there. We are going to present our lives out there full of oil that we can pay what our fathers have done. As the book of Ezekiel says, the fathers have eaten the grapes and the sons have got the gassing of the tithe. So tonight, those tithe that are painful are going to be paid for by the servants of God who are in the house tonight. Who will be leading us in prayer tonight, giving us new oil, giving us a payment for the date. So the waymaker has made a way for us today, for our dates to be paid. The waymaker tonight has provided us with enough and adequate servants who are going to help and address our matters tonight. Give us a worship song please. A worship song please. Wahalalala. Oh yes.
Go siya ma go si. Go siya ma go si.
Uya halalela. Uya halalela. Uya halalela. Wahala lela. Uya halalela. Wahala lela. Kosi amakosi. Uya halalela. What's the mood? Uya halalela.
What's the mood? Kosi amakosi.
Ayaka rebe se. Yeke kavosia. Ayaka kavosia. Ah, ye 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 ye. And we are worshiping. And we are worshiping in the house. Because we are preparing ourselves for the adequate oils for this happening. The oil that is enough for our business. The oil for this house to deal with our situations and my situations. Oreke deke kavosan.
By God.
Ayaka kavosan. Yeke deke deke.
Reba dava ya. Reka siyanda.
Oreke deke kavosia. Oreke deke kavosia. Oreke deke kavosia.
In the name of Jesus.
Yes, Jesus.
Yera kavosia.
Oh, yeke deke. Arakata kavosia. Thank you, Jesus. Oh, let's hear it. Let's hear it. Oh, let's hear it.
Arise, oh God. For this night, we have seen miracles. For this night, we have seen miracles. Oh, more arise. Yakos ketsayana. Ye ketsayana. Your revival is there. Ayaka kavosan. Oreka kavosan. Reke kavosan. Reka kavosan. Open. 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 Cause of instant miracles. Cause of instant miracles. Let us open in the name of Jesus. Let us open in the name of Jesus. Open any white door and open it. Open any white door and open it. Let us open in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. Yahaba. Yahaba dava. Yahri katsabada. Yitakakakea. Yahrokoskaria. Ye ketsayana. Reka dava ya. Ye rokosiya. Ye koks. Somebody open your mouth. Open your mouth. Open your mouth. Why? Yes. Yahaba. Yahrakateke de. In the name of Jesus, sir. Open your mouth. And the Lord, the God of miracles. The God of instant miracles.
Oh, Jesus. Oh, yes, Lord. You know, you know, men of God. It is said, "How can the two walk together unless they are in agreement?" Are you in agreement with me? That today, your situation is going to be sorted?
I agree with you, men of God.
Are you in agreement with me? That your sickness today is the end of the sickness?
I agree with you.
Are you in agreement with me? That God has good service and grace for you and me?
I agree with you, men of God.
Let us welcome Pastor Simba and Pastor Lindiwe as they are going to lead us in the next session. Hallelujah. Oh, uya halalela. Oh, yes, Jesus. Uya kosi mula kosi amakosi. Ye no wayenzi suru ne mutaba. Unakogunengi gulingi nemina tawe. Ukona nasa. Anso luki sitama yakoneye. Ah, wahala lela. Wahala lela. Wahala le. Oh, mutimo waruna. Ah, huh. Kosi amakosi.
Rika kavosan. Thank you, Jesus. We thank you, Holy Spirit. We thank you, Lord God Almighty. You are a good God. You are a loving God, my Jesus. Here we are in your presence, my Lord. As we are expecting miracles tonight. Here we are, Lord God Almighty. As we are expecting big miracles, my Lord. Big miracles, big miracles. Big miracles, big miracles. Big miracles, big miracles. Big miracles, big miracles. We are expecting your power, my Lord. We are expecting your power, my Jesus. We are expecting testimonies, my Lord. You have done it before. And we know you are going to do it again. We have witnessed your power. And we know we are going to witness it again tonight. Father, we thank you for tonight. We thank you for tonight, my Lord. For all the miracles that shall reign all over the world. For all the miracles that shall reign all over the world. We thank you, Holy Spirit.
We thank you, Lord.
We thank you, Lord God Almighty.
We thank you, Almighty.
For what you are about to do. We thank you, Holy Spirit.
We thank you tonight.
For what you are about to do. We thank you, my Father. We thank you, Lord God Almighty. In Jesus' mighty name. Can somebody shout, "Jesus"?
Jesus.
Shout, "Jesus".
Jesus.
Who is going to change your life tonight? Who is going to give you a testimony tonight?
Jesus.
Who is going to transform your life tonight?
Jesus.
If you are sick, who is going to heal you tonight?
Jesus.
If you are looking for a marriage, who is going to give you a marriage tonight?
Jesus.
Ah, if you are believing, shout, "Jesus".
Jesus.
Shout, "Jesus".
Jesus.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
This is the day that the Lord has met. The day that you are going to receive miracles.
Oh, yes.
These signs shall only follow them that believe it. As the book of Mark says. So what I'm asking you tonight is for you to believe. Because the power that shall reign all over the world shall touch only those who believe.
Oh, yes.
So this is the moment that you need to open your heart and say, "Lord God Almighty, I'm believing in your power."
Oh, yes, Lord.
"I have been in this situation for years. But tonight I'm believing in your power."
Oh, yes, Jesus.
You have declared that tonight is the night of instant testimonies. So as the Bible says in the book of Mark, "That these signs shall follow them that believe it." What is only needed is for you to believe that I was not married, but after tonight, I shall be married. I was barren, but after tonight, I shall be fruitful. I was not working, but after tonight, I shall be working. I don't know if I have someone who's listening to me tonight who's believing for a turnaround in his or her life. If you are there, just shout, "Jesus".
Jesus.
If you are there, shout, "Jesus".
Jesus.
Mudianni, I just want you to believe.
Oh, yes.
God is going to remember you if only you believe. The way he remembered blind Patimias is the same way he's going to remember you tonight.
Amen.
The same way he remembered Hannah is the same way he's going to remember you tonight. So there's an anointing which is moving everywhere. If you are watching all over the world, I want you to understand that distance is not a barrier.
Oh, yes.
We are about to pray for your instant miracle. If you are in this environment, don't take it for granted. You are not here by mistake. This is the day that the Lord has made just for you. Those that are not here, it is not their day.
Oh, yes.
Are you listening to me? God has allowed you to be here just for your miracle.
Oh, yes.
Even to those who are watching me from all different social media platforms. You are not connected by mistake. It means it is your time to receive your miracle.
Oh, yes.
So I want people who are ready to pray tonight. If you are watching me from your phone, I want you to stand in your house, in your office, wherever you are watching us from. This is the time that we are about to pray. And we are only praying for your miracle. There's an anointing which is in this environment. There's an anointing which is touching everyone who is connected through different social media platforms. So if you are connected, just know that there's an anointing which shall reign in your house tonight. If you are watching wherever you are watching us from, just know that wherever you are, there's an anointing which shall come upon your life tonight.
Amen.
I'm speaking about an anointing that is about to break the yoke of the devil.
Oh, yes.
So that yoke of limitation, that yoke of anti-progress, that yoke that was making you not to progress in life is about to be broken tonight. I'm speaking about that yoke of sickness. I'm speaking about that yoke of poverty.
Oh, yes.
We are about to pray right now. Those you are here, you know the yoke which is in your life. If you can mention it by name, don't worry about the person who's next to you. This is the time that you need to focus on your God. We have been fasting. Just wait a bit. Just wait a bit. We have been fasting from Monday. And I want you to understand that your fasting is not to go in vain.
Amen.
As we are going to pray.
Oh, yes.
I want you to say every yoke of the devil in my life be broken in the name of Jesus.
Oh, yes.
You are going to open your mouth wherever you are. Don't allow the person next to you to disturb you.
Oh, yes.
You carry the power, you carry the anointing.
Oh, yes.
What is only needed right now is for you to declare and say every yoke of the devil in my life. That yoke of sickness, that yoke of limitation be broken in the name of Jesus. If you are there, say to open your mouth and say to pray. Open your mouth and say to pray right now. Open your mouth and say to pray. Open your mouth and say to pray. Say every yoke of the devil be broken. Every yoke of the devil be broken. Every yoke of the devil in my life be broken. Every yoke of the devil be broken. 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 Command it out. Command it to be broken. Command that yoke to be broken. There's an anointing which is breaking every yoke. There's an anointing which is breaking every yoke. There's an anointing which is breaking every yoke. That yoke of limitation. That yoke of poverty. That yoke of anti-marriage. Be broken, be broken. Be broken right now. 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 Listen to me. Listen to me. Listen to me. Hey, hey. I'm speaking about that yoke of anti-marriage which is making you not to be married.
Oh, yes.
You need to be violent tonight. And decree and declare for that yoke to be broken. Am I speaking to you, somebody? I want you to feel it from your stomach. And say every yoke be broken right now. Start to pray, start to pray. Start to pray. Start to pray. That yoke must be broken tonight. That yoke must be broken tonight. That yoke must be broken tonight. Every yoke in your life. Every yoke in your life be broken. 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 That yoke of evil. That yoke of sickness. That yoke of sickness. That yoke of sickness. Be broken right now. 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 Open your mouth and declare. 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 Let that yoke be broken. Let that yoke be broken. Yeah, 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 let that yoke be broken. Let that yoke be broken. The devil is a liar. The devil is a loser. Let that yoke be broken. 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 Listen to me. Listen to me. Listen to me. There's an anointing which is moving all over.
Oh, yes.
So long you are under the anointing of this voice.
Oh, yes.
There's an anointing which is moving all over. What is only needed is for you to declare. The Bible says you shall declare a thing and it shall be established. I want you to declare right now. That poverty in your life, it is a yoke. That sickness, it is a yoke. I want you to open your mouth and declare. And say every yoke be broken right now. Open your mouth, say, but open your mouth. Open your mouth and declare. Open your mouth and declare. Let that yoke be broken. 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 The devil is a liar. The devil is a liar. The devil is a liar. Open your mouth and declare. Let that yoke be broken. Open your mouth and declare. Let that yoke be broken. That sickness. Let it be broken. That sickness, that sickness. That sickness. That sickness. That sickness. Be broken right now. 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 Yeah, 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 yeah. Open your mouth and pray. Open your mouth. Open your mouth. Open your mouth and pray. Open your mouth and pray. Open your mouth and pray. The devil is trouble. The devil is trouble. The devil is trouble. The devil is trouble. We are coming by fire. We are coming by fire. Declare somebody. Declare somebody. Let that yoke be broken. 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 That yoke of poverty. That yoke of poverty. That yoke of poverty. That yoke of limitation. That yoke of limitation. Be broken right now. Be broken right now. Be broken right now. Be broken right now. The devil is trouble. The devil is trouble. The devil is trouble. Open your mouth, poverty. The devil is trouble. The devil is trouble. The devil is trouble. Let that yoke be broken. 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 That limitation. That sickness. That poverty. That anti-marriage. Be broken right now. Be broken right now. Be broken right now. Ever you are a liar. Ever you are a stupid. Be broken. Be broken. Be broken. Your time is expired. 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 Be broken right now. 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 In Jesus mighty name.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ri pa 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 pa. Tarama hana. Nepepepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. We are still praying, hallelujah. The Bible says, by mentioning the name Jesus, every nation shall bow and every town confess that he is the Lord, hallelujah. Meaning to say that every problem, that limitation, will bow to his name tonight.
Oh yes.
That poverty will bow to his name tonight. That anti-marriage will bow to his name tonight. I want you somebody to lift up a prayer tonight and say poverty, bow to the name of Jesus. Limitation, bow to the name of Jesus. Ra pa kaya ba sa kaya ba hana. Ra pa 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 pa.
Oh yes.
Ra kaya ba sa kaya ba hana.
Oh yes.
Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ri pa 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 pa. Ra pa 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 pa. Tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ri kaya maha. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ra pa 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 pa. Ra pa 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 pa. Poverty. Bow to the name of the Lord. Limitation, bow to his name. Limitation, bow to his name. Ra kaya ba ba. Ra kaya ba ba ba. Ra pa kaya ba ba. Ra pa kaya ba ba. That proxy. Bow to the name of the Lord. That sickness. Bow to the name of the Lord. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ra kaya ba sa tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ri kaya ba ba ba. Ra kaya bo siya tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ra pa 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 pa. Ra pa 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 pa. Ra pa 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 pa. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. And the message of Jesus. And the message of Jesus.
Shit. Shit.
Ra pa 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 pa. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ra pa 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 pa. 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 Tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Listen to me, Chara Khora. Listen to me, Chara Khora. Listen to me, Chara Khora. Ra kaya ba sa tarama hana. Ra pa 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 pa. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ri kaya ba ba ba. Ra kaya ba ba tarama hana. Ri kaya ba ba ba. Ra kaya ba ba ba. Ra kaya ba ba ba. Ra kaya ba ba ba. Every problem. Bow to him. Every problem.
Nita ka pa nitiya. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nita ka pa nitiya. Anita ka pa nitiya. Nita ka pa nitiya. Ri pa 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 pa. Nita ka pa nitiya. Ri pa pa ka do. Nita ka pa nitiya. Nita ka pa do. Nita ka pa nitiya. Nita ka pa nitiya. Ri pa pa ka do. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Ri pa pa ka do. Nita ka pa nitiya. Ri pa pa ka do. Nita ka pa do. Nita ka pa do. Nita ka pa do. Nita ka pa do. You think. You want to. To bow to him. Never go. Ri pa 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 pa. Ri pa 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 pa. Nita ka pa do. Nita ka pa do. Nita ka pa do. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nita ka pa do. Ri pa pa ka do. Nepeke do. Ri peke do. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nita ka do. Shit. Nita ka pa do. Ri ta 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 terebo siya tarama hana. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nita ka pa do.
Hallelujah. 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 Ra kaya bo siya tarama hana. Nita ka pa do. Ra kaya terebo siya tarama hana. Ri kaya bo siya tarama hana. The Bible says, fix in your eyes unto Jesus, hallelujah. The older and the finisher and the perfecter of your faith, hallelujah. If we go down with it, hallelujah, it says, he suffered the cross, amen. I want you to go before the Lord, hallelujah.
Oh yes.
When you look in the Bible, hallelujah, there's a woman of the issue of blood, hallelujah. The Bible says, she just went and she touched the hem of the garment, hallelujah. And she was instantly healed, hallelujah. We have people who've got situations here, hallelujah. Some has been suffering for so long, hallelujah. Some has been sick for so long, hallelujah. But I say tonight, fix your eyes unto the Lord, hallelujah. Fix your eyes unto the Lord, hallelujah. I want you to pray tonight and say my God, help me to fix my eyes unto you so that you can perfect me, oh God. Ri kaya maha. Ra pa 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 pa. Ra kaya ba sa kaya ba hana. Ra kaya ba sa kaya ba.
Fix my life. 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 Fix my life, be fixed. Fix my life to my Lord. Fix my life, Lord God Almighty. Fix my life to my. Fix my life. 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 Nita ka pa do. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nita ka pa do. 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 Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Shit. Nita ka pa do. Shit. Nita ke do. Shit. Nita ka do. Hey, 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 hey. Hey, hey. Nepeke terebo siya tarama hana. Nita ka pa do. Nita ke do. Shit. Nita ka pa do. Ri ta ta do. Nita ka pa do. Nita ka do. Shit. Nita ka do. Shit. Ri pa pa ka do. Shit. Nita ka pa do. Shit. Nita ka pa do. Ri ke ke do. Shit. Nita ka pa do. Listen to me somebody.
Oh yes.
You might see what's happening in this house.
Oh yes.
You might see it like it's drama. But there's something that is happening in the spirit right now. There's an anointing which is moving everywhere right now. I can feel it, I can feel it. There's an anointing which is moving all over. And that anointing must rest upon your life tonight. That anointing must rest upon your life tonight. As we are praying for that anointing to come upon your life, I want you to shift the gear and pray and say, Lord God Almighty, anoint my hands. There are people whereby if they work, whatever that they touch, it won't produce any results. So I want you to take advantage of the anointing of today and say, Lord God Almighty, anoint my hands. When you plant, there must be a difference. And say, these hands that planted here, these hands are blessed. I want you to hold your hands like this. Open your hands like this and say, Lord, anoint my hands. Whatever that I touch must be fruitful. We want results from your hands. We want results from your work. Whatever that you shall touch with your hands, it must be producing results. When you lay your hand upon your children, they must be healed. When you are doing a job, whatever that you are doing for a living, it must be blessed because of your hands.
In the name of Jesus.
I want you to open your hands right now.
Oh yes.
If you're watching all over the world, hold your phone with the other hand and open the other hand and shake it and say, Lord God Almighty.
Lord God Almighty.
Anoint my hands.
Anoint my hands.
Lord God Almighty. Anoint my hands.
Anoint my hands.
Let them be fruitful.
Let them be fruitful.
Let them be fruitful. Open your mouth and pray. Open your mouth and pray. Say, let them be fruitful. Let them be fruitful. Let them be fruitful. Anoint my hands. Let them be fruitful.
Oh yes.
Anoint my hands. Let them be fruitful.
Ladies and gentlemen, that is Jesus has been talented by God. Let us pray. Let us pray, dear me, Jesus. Let us pray, my Lord. Let us pray, my Father. Let us pray, my God. Carida, ba 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 ba. Say, Carida Boz. We thank you, Jesus.
His presence.
Oh yes.
The power of his presence.
Hallelujah.
The presence of his power. He is here.
In the name of.
If you are sick, you need the anointing to be healed. If you are poor, Jesus became poor so that you can be rich. On that note, Pastor Nyoni and Pastor Elizabeth, they are coming with more powerful anointed prayers.
Oh yes. Oh yes. Oh yes, oh yes, oh.
Come and do what you do. We are here for you. Come and do what you do. We are here.
We are here for you.
Come and do.
Come and do what you do.
Oh, we are here.
We are here for you.
Come and do.
Come and do what you do.
We need a move.
Oh, Jesus.
We need a move. We need a move. We need a move. Here for you.
Come and do what you do.
We are here.
We are here for you.
We are here for you.
Come and do what you do.
Oh, Lord, we are here.
We are here for you.
Come and do.
Come and do what you do.
Oh, we are here.
We are here for you.
Come and do.
Come and do what you do.
Because we need a move.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Atmosphere for miracles, hallelujah. An atmosphere which is somebody is going to separate with your sickness. An atmosphere which somebody is going to separate with somebody is going to separate with your bad dreams. Somebody is going to separate with your lameness. Somebody is going to separate with your barrenness.
Oh yes.
On the last day, on the last day of the feast, Jesus stood and said to the crowd, if anyone among you is sick, if anyone among you is lacking, if anyone among you, let him come to me and drink. After drinking, those who believe, after drinking, those who believe, out of their bellies, 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 shall flow rivers of living waters. From that dryness, rivers of living waters shall flow. From that sickness, rivers of living waters shall flow. From that sitback, rivers of living waters shall flow. From that barrenness, rivers of living waters shall flow. There is somebody right now watching online who is losing hope, who is losing hope right now. Who is saying, my situation, my situation, Lord. Who is saying, is comparing yourself with other people. That my situation is deeper. My sickness is deeper. Somebody is giving name about your situation. My God, my God, my God. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. My God, somebody. People are laughing at you. You are losing hope. People are laughing at you because of what is happening in your life. But today, today, we are saying today, now. We are saying today, today, now. We are saying today, today, now. We are saying today, now. We are saying the, now. Father God, in the name of Jesus, thank you, Lord. Oh, you are God, you are. You are Jehovah, you are Jehovah. Oh, we are here, Lord Jesus. We are here, we are here, oh God. Father, we are here, in the name of God. In the name of God.
We are going to do the baronage. Oh, the fire. We know. The man that came to us. He is man that came to us. He is not going to come to us. Man, he has been to us. He is a man that came 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 to us. A man that comes to us. He comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. A man that comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. A man that comes to us. Oh, in the name of. We are going to say, Father. As we say, Lord. We are calling, we are calling, in the name of mighty God. Our God for the prayer. Shall flow rivers of living water. He is a man that comes to us. 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 He comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. Our God for the prayer, Lord. Shall flow rivers of living water. In that dryness, Lord. Rivers of living water. In that barrenness, Lord. Rivers of living water. He is a man that comes to us. 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 Lord. He is a man that comes to us. Oh. He is a man that comes to us. 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 My family, Lord. He is a man that comes to us. Somebody was watching online. He is a man that comes to us. 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 Let your oil flow. 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 Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. He is a man that comes to us. 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 Let your oil flow. Let your oil flow. Let your oil flow. He is a man that comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. He is a man that comes to us. We thank you, oh Jesus Christ. In the name of Jesus. Thank you, Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you, mighty God.
Manda Baba.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, Lord.
Hallelujah. As we read from the in the Bible, Ephesians 5, from verse 1 to 2, it says, "Therefore, be the imitators of Jesus Christ." Hallelujah. And it went on and saying, "And live a life and be loved like your father. Be loved like your father, Jesus Christ." Hallelujah. But I want us to go on the verse 3, whereby it said, "But stay away from immorality."
Yes.
"But stay away from foolishness talk. But stay away from filthiness." We are in a season whereby we want to kill the flesh. We want to kill the flesh. As it is a revival, I want you and me to go before the Lord that we want to kill this flesh. The flesh desires. You know what your flesh wants. You know what your flesh desires. So we want to go before the Lord and say, "Sickness is something that was inflicted in us because maybe there's another thing that has been attained." Hallelujah. So we want to pray right now. We want to engage in a serious prayer because this is the time. In this revival, we don't want to go back the same way. We want to kill this flesh we desire. We want to kill what our flesh desire. Hallelujah. Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. My one and only God, to kill every flesh we desire upon my life. Your sake, oh God, is crying. 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 I am offering my life to you. I am offering my life to you. Help us. Help us. We are in a crisis. 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 I am offering my life to you. 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 Let your fire roast, Shagaya. 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 You are God that comes to us. You are the one 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 that comes to us. Let your fire roast, Shagaya. 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 Shagaya, let your fire roast. We are all in the water, Lord. 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 I am also in the water. I am also in the water. You are a sick person. 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 You want to die. 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 You shall not be detained anything of the water for it is the time of sin where the water is flooded. May you take over, may you take on, like Jesus, never pray.
Thank you, Jesus.
You know, as the temperatures are rising, as the temperatures are rising tonight, if we go into the word of the Lord again, I told you that I love the book of Second Kings. Chapter number 6, from verse 1 up to 7, we hear of a story. The sons of the prophet discovered that the dwelling place was becoming small. Your life has been proven that things are limited. Your health is restricting you. Your marriage is restricting you. Your children themselves are restricting your happiness. But we value our mothers died because of baby that we induced in them. So there are a lot of things that are limited in us. It needs you to take yourself and say, "The men of God, we are going to cut down poles. Men of God, I am going down to prayer house. Men of God, I'm going to pray. I cannot go alone. I need the men of God." Because even when you are trying to do things yourself, the eggs can fall in water. Ah. The eggs can fall in water. But tonight, we have got a man of God in the house. He is here to address the egg which has fallen into water.
Name of Jesus.
Address what we lost ourselves.
Jesus.
He is here tonight to talk to your situation. Can you declare, Benzes, to welcome the father of the house? Welcome your pastor.
Oh, yes.
Just lift up your hands.
Oh, yes.
Wherever you are, for. Just lift up your hands wherever you are. Worship.
Oh, yes, Lord.
Worship. Open up your mouth. Worship. Open up your mouth. Don't ask for anything.
Yes.
Worship. Just worship.
Thank you, Jesus.
Just worship, he loves that. He enjoys that. Ashas, please help, help somebody. Just worship, 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 worship.
The A Center of Peace.
It's an it's an atmosphere for miracles. Just worship, just worship, just worship, just worship, just worship. Just worship. Please, don't see. Open up your mouth and worship. Everyone worship. All the people are watching us online. Right now worship, 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 worship. Ashas, bring her, bring her, bring her, bring her. Just quickly. We are in water, Lord. This house, this house, this house is full of the glory of the living God. Just worship. In his presence, just worship. It is well with your soul. Just worship, just worship, just worship, just worship. Bring her. It is well with your soul. It is well with your soul. It is well with your soul. I want you to worship, 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 worship. Something is about to happen. A shift is about to happen. The transformation is about to happen. Open up that mouth. Say you are holy, oh God of Israel, the ever living God, the one who was there from the beginning until now. Leave her, please, leave her, it's fine. It's, leave her. Worship, 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 open up your mouth and worship. You must learn to worship. It's essential for this kingdom. It's essential for this kingdom. This revival is raising worshippers, not beggars. If you don't if you don't master the art of worship, this revival will skip you. We love you, Jesus. We adore you, Jesus. You are wonderful, Jesus. You are the king of kings. You are the king of my life. Oh, Rekanamaya Kareba ya da 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 da. There is a movement of worshippers. People who are hungry not to ask for anything. Oh, Rekababa, there is a movement now. There is an atmosphere now. Men and women who are hungry for Jesus. Who are saying, "We don't want anything from you. We just need your presence and we are enough." It is the season, ladies and gentlemen, that was prophesied in the Bible, that the true worshippers shall worship, not ask. They shall worship and not ask. Worship. Kalabaretata takash. Worship. Lift up your hand in worship. There is power in worship. Oh, my God. Oh, my Jesus. Comment section. Type, "I love you, Jesus." Comment section. If you are not ashamed of him, type, "I love you, Jesus." Whether things are fine or not, whether I receive or not, whether I am healed or not, whether good or bad, I shall worship your holy name. Let the name of the Lord Jesus be lifted. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. I love this, I love this. I love this. I love this. I love this. We are in water, Lord. Listen. 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 I am feeling the love of God in this house. Your Father is here evidently, evidently, evidently. So you just need to say, "God, I wanna know you, I wanna understand you." He is now loving people. I am feeling his love right now. Open up your mouth and say, "God, I wanna understand you. I wanna know you." Open up your mouth and your heart. Worship, worship. Tell him that you wanna understand him. Jesus, the mighty one of Israel, the king of kings, the one who lives forever. I want you to listen to me. I want you to carefully listen to me. One day, I made a call.
Okay.
A phone call. This phone call put my life in danger. So what happened? Before I phoned, network was refusing. Buying airtime was refusing. I went into the garage, bought airtime, tried to recharge it. It refused. I tried my F and B account. It refused. I tried all my accounts, they refused. Then I said, "Everything can fail, Then I said, everything can fail, but Mukuru is not gonna fail. I tried Mukuru, it failed. Then I said, what is the meaning of this? I need to make this call. When I made that call, after just making it. I tried to recharge the phone. It was recharged. I was in a big problem because of the call that I made. I was in trouble because of the call that I made. So when I was at home, I began to pray, God, I'm, I'm in trouble. And he said to me, you are in trouble because you don't listen. I said, God, you never spoke to me, you are starting now. He said. It is because you don't understand me, I want you to start me and understand me. The network which was refusing, the airtime, which was refusing to recharge, that's me. I was trying to show you what you should do, this phone call is gonna put your life in danger. So I understood that the thing that we need to understand about. Before we do anything in this Christian world, is to understand God. Plenty of people understand prayer. Plenty of people understand giving. Plenty of people understand fasting, but they don't understand God. So I want you to pray this prayer. And say, God, make me understand you. There are journeys that can refuse because God is saying no. There are relationships that can fail because God is saying no. There are businesses that can fail because God is saying no. But if you don't understand God, you keep on blaming him and praying to him, yet he is the cause of your problem. So people must have a. A study about God, how he moves, how he does his things. Because sometimes his presence may come with negative results. Because I remember when Jesus was born. If you understand Jesus coming to the earth, this is God coming from heaven to the earth. So when we see Jesus, we have seen Emmanuel, God with us. But the moment we are receiving God. We hear that the children were killed. By a rod. In search of Jesus, in trying to kill Jesus. The presence of God is not coming with good results. It's coming with bad results. If you studied when you look at the negative results, you might assume that this is the devil. Yet people are being killed because God has descended. You are not hearing me. There is a moment you can be broken. Yet God is protecting you. There is a moment you can be heartbroken, yet God is protecting you. There is a moment you can be divorced, yet it is God who is protecting you. When I was moving today, when I was walking, I was walking in a mall, then the Holy Spirit began to speak to me. He said, look at that woman. I said, yeah, I saw her. Isn't she beautiful? I said, yes, she is beautiful. Then God said to me, do you know that on this day and that day and that day, she's going to die? Then I said, what does that have anything to do with me? Then the Holy Spirit began to explain to me how it operates. He said to me, you see now, I see there. You're not hearing me. You see now, I see there. The relationship may be fine right now, to an extent that when you lose that man. You say, God, I had received a proper man and you took him away from me. God is not seeing the properness now, he is seeing the darkness in the future. She may be good now, he may be good now. This is what you see, but God does not deal with now, he deals with them. I had just started my business, it was doing so well, then all of a sudden, it's down. Why God is doing that? God is seeing that when you are doing that business, one day you are going to be robbed, not only you. You are going to be robbed your money and your life. Your business, one day in the future, in this month on this date. People are going to come into your shop with guns. And they are going not only to steal your money, they will steal your life. So for me to save your life, I will kill the business and save your soul. But it can only be understood by the people who, who, who sit down and begin to study the movements of God. So you need to read the patterns of God and see how he operates in your life. There is a certain pattern that God, a plant in every individual. So that it can be easy for you to understand him when he moves. When God remembered the children of Israel. Moses was born. When you see Moses, you have seen salvation. When you see Moses, you have seen deliverance, but as soon as Moses was born. Children of his age were killed. It seems like the, the coming of God is coming with problems. So plenty of times when you pray so much, problems comes. Plenty of times when you fast so much, problem comes. I want you to be stronger and begin to start God in your times of crying. While you are crying, say, God, I am in tears, but I wanna understand you. Where are you, what are you trying to do? So your hunger now is to understand his movement. God, when I am sick, what does it mean? The children of Isakah, they had an understanding about time. They had a special understanding about time. Other people neglected time and they thought time is, is not a thing. But the children of Isakah, when they heard anything about time, they would sit down and say, I wanna start. Why is the sun like this? Why is it twelve o'clock? Why is it one o'clock? There is somebody who must say, I have been praying a lot, now I don't wanna pray only, I wanna start God. You realize good when you start God, your tears will be filled. Because anything that comes to your life is not a problem, it's a voice. Because Jesus said, I am by the door. I am knocking. He is what? Is he speaking? No. Is he, is he using a microphone? No. What is he doing? What is he doing? Then he goes on to say, when I am knocking. The one who shall be able to hear my voice. He is knocking, he is knocking. He is not speaking. There is no voice, but in that knock, those who can understand his voice. God has been knocking your head, he has been knocking your business, he has been knocking your health. But your problem, you don't understand the voice within the knock. Say, God, right now. I'm in a season of trying to start you. Teach me. How to understand you. All the things that you've been crying for, for years. Most of them, they are the voices of God, but they didn't come as a voice, they came as a knock. That job that you lost, it might have been a knock. But your problem, you heard the voice of the devil instead of the voice of Jesus. Christians know a lot about Satan. They know a lot about principalities. If you ask them about spiritual husbands, they will tell you about where they come from and how they are related to human beings. You ask them about God, they know nothing. We need to start God. You know, there is an example that the other person was saying. God is like this. He is like an elephant which is big. Right? So if you are not careful, you may, you, 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 you may touch the pipe. Of the, oh, 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 the trunk, oh, of the elephant. And this is what you understand good, an elephant has a trunk. Then someone comes and say, and touched the, the horn. The elephants have horns. Then you touch the horn, someone can come and say, oh, the ears are too big. So these are people who are studying different parts of one elephant. So you can hear another person saying. If you wanna know an elephant, you must see the trunk. The other one who, who say, if you wanna understand an elephant, you must see the ears. But you don't want people who understand parts of God. We want people who understand every system about God. Because you will fight. Fortune will come to me and say, an elephant has a long trunk. I'll tell you, it's a lie. An elephant has big ears. Fortune also disagree because she doesn't know about the ears of the elephant. She only knows about the trunks. We want the people who knows the trunks, the ears, the horns, the eyes, and everything about an elephant. When you are going to read the Bible, from today onwards, don't look for perverses to preach. No, understand the mindset of God. How he was dealing with other people is the same way he will deal with you. If God killed somebody because of adultery, you must know, you don't need anybody to preach to you. When you do adultery, know that you are going to the way of the person you read in the Bible. Lift up your hands. Serious prayer time. Serious prayer time. Serious prayer time. Open up your mouth and say, Father, I wanna understand you. Father, I wanna know you. Open up your mouth and pray now.
I want to know you. I want to know ways, according to your way, oh Lord. Moses knew the ways. In the name of Jesus, as it was with Moses. May I understand your ways? I want to understand you, Lord, in the name of Jesus. According to the book of Acts, the children of Israel, they knew the act of God. Moses knew the ways. I want to know you more. Paul says, that I may know you, that I may know you, that I may understand your ways.
Open up your mouth. Say your offer, who are you? What do you do?
I want to know you.
Understand your movement. Open up your mouth right now.
I want to understand you, I want to know. That I may know you more, that I may know your ways. In the name of Jesus, in the mighty name of Jesus, oh Lord, I want to know you more.
Open up your mouth.
In the mighty name of Jesus.
Tell him that I wanna know you. I wanna understand you. I don't want people to tell me about you. I wanna know you in my world. I wanna make my daughter study about you. And get every sense about who Jesus is.
You said I'm about to do anything, Lord, the plan is there. I want to know you, that I may know you more.
Open up your mouth. It's a simple but powerful prayer. It's a simple but powerful prayer. I wanna understand God. I wanna understand Jesus. I wanna understand Jesus. Oh, no, 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 no.
I want to understand you, Lord. I want to understand you, Lord. In the name of Jesus, your plan, oh Lord.
Open up your mouth.
I want to know you more, Lord. More of you, less of me, more of you. Direct my path, order my ways. Order my ways. Order my path.
Open up your mouth.
Your ways, oh Lord. Are higher than my ways. In the name of Jesus. Your ways, oh Lord. Show me your ways, show me your ways. You are the one in the children of the life, in the name of Jesus, first.
Listen. I want you to carefully listen to me. Say, God. I wanna understand you. Say, God. I wanna understand you. I need to. Come. Pastor Voj. Right. I wanna show people something here, stand here. Pastor Rod, sit over there. Come, Panash. I want you to follow slowly. I want to show you the mindset of God, how to understand God. People who understand they are God, even in times of trouble, they remain calm. I will make you understand God. Come here. You are already standing by the light. Now. Standing there by Pastor Michael there. My people are watching me. I want you to follow this. I'll teach you how to study God and you pray for this because you're gonna need it. Now. We have a man, a boy called Joseph. This boy dreams. His dreams are saying, all, all, all of your family members. They will bow down before you. You shall be almost a king over them. But remember, this is the last born. The smallest one. But his dreams are telling him that one day, one, there is, say, one day. It might not be now, but one day, I shall be there. It may take time, but one day, I will be there. Then the boy tells the father. Then he also tells the brothers. The brothers didn't, didn't feel comfortable with the dreams of this kind. But once you dream, it shall happen, nobody can stop a dream. Say, nobody shall stop my dream. I declare this grace offer you, nobody shall stop your dreams. Now. Just soon after dreaming, when you dream, it means that God has visited you. When God visited Joseph, problems started. The brothers began to hate him. But we have people who are hated by people here who interpret it as, as demons. Everyone here hates me, nobody wanna support me. Some other people don't want to support you, so that they won't take the glory of God when he raises you up. Because if they support you, when God raises you up, they will say it is us. If you were not there, he was not gonna make it. So don't just interpret every bad thing in your life as a demon. If you pray, if you fast, if you are not sinning, every bad thing is good. You didn't hear me. I say, if you pray, if you fast, if you give, you don't sin, every negative thing is positive. First, the brothers hate him. When he is hated, it seems like that's all. I remember one day when he went to give the brothers food, they said, there comes the dreamer. There are people here who are not loved in the families, even your mother. Your own parents don't love you, there is somebody in favor in the family. And you wonder, why is it like that? The rejected stone one day shall become the chief cornerstone. So God can actually make people hate you, so that he can love you alone. There are people especially to that extent, where everyone hates them, but only loved by God. And people don't realize that. I am here, I grew up like that, the whole area where I was staying, nobody loved me. But right now I am here, I'm not here because of them, I am here because of God. Let them reject you, but one day God shall raise you up. As if it is enough, they hate him, then they try, they decided to, you know what? Let's just get rid of this boy. Let's kill him. What is he being killed for? Dreams. If you look at what people hate you for, you don't even understand it. Once you pray, once you fast, once you give, you don't do sins, don't worry, that hate is love. Are you hearing me? Say that hate is love. Then they tied him, they threw him into a pit. A very deeper one. And this is the boy who had a dream. Imagine, you had a dream of people kneeling down before you, you are now in a pit. And they went and lied to the, to the father, which are, you know, we don't know what happened to this boy, maybe the jackals and the lions ate him. So now the guy is in the pit. As if it is enough, it was enough, it wasn't enough. The Isma lights were coming from, 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 from their country, going to Egypt to trade. Now, they went into the, they, they checked there, they found a boy inside there. I'm sure when the boy saw the Isma lights coming to them, they said, help, here's Khan. I'm sure Joseph, when he saw the Isma lights, he said, oh, thank you, God, at least I'm rescued. There is a time when you come out of a problem. Then a solution comes, then it comes for a minute and disappears, it happens in life, it's a process of taking you far. Have you ever been in that kind of a situation? After a problem, a solution comes, but the problem will come again from the solution. Now. Joseph is taken out of the pit, I'm sure I wanted to hug, thank you so much. Thank you so much for what? Let's tell him. So we are going to sell this boy to Egypt. Of the things that you wanna. Of the things that you wanna sell, we now have another package.
Another program.
And this package is a dream. So long we have a dream, we are not going to die, you shall live to fulfill your dreams in Jesus' name. So, and go nap or you don't sleep, so how are you gonna dream? I pray that the Lord may reveal your future in the name of Jesus.
Oh, yes.
So now, the guy is sold to Egypt, to a guy called Potiphar. Say, I brought this servant, he's very, very good, sit down, man. Hey.
Okay.
Hardworking, and they didn't even know him, I'm sure they gave recommendations. Then the Bible says, and God blessed Potiphar because of Joseph. And Joseph didn't realize how much he is blessed. There are a lot of people here who are useless in their own eyes, but to God, you are not useless.
Hallelujah.
If you were useless, you would have been a grave by now.
Oh, yes.
You're hearing me?
Yes.
Say if I was useless, I would have been a grave now. I live because Jesus loves me.
Because Jesus loves me.
Joseph is now a slave. And Mr. Potiphar loves Joseph. And he says, I am giving you everything here to take control. I'm sure to Joseph, it was like the dreams are coming, what?
Are coming true now.
Are coming true, stand up. Now, Joseph, Mr. Potiphar, you make a visit, you leave everything under...
Joseph.
Under Joseph. Now, Joseph, you have a problem, may you go this side. Joseph, you have a problem, your master left everything in your hands, and everything, including the wife. But you must know what you must do with the wife. It's not everything that God gives around you that you have to use.
Okay. Right.
The wife is there, but it's not yours. It's like somebody who finds money in the house and is saying that no longer. Mumba. One day, Kuda, Minister Kuda, they went to, not this one, the guy and Pastor Wilo, they went to... I sent them to buy me milk, and they came with change, which was too much. I said, go back with that change, because that person will lose the job. Yes, it's money, it's not a miracle. If it was you. If it was you. That's my question. In Shona, they say, za waram twan. Then, please, now. This is the wife of Potiphar, remember, Joseph was handsome. Then the wife of Potiphar, do like we want to say, use him. So just wait maybe one side, so that it won't be difficult for him to come out, just like this, yeah. So, one day when Joseph was working, Madame Boss said, please, man, just sleep with me, so where now you must? And leave the jacket, do.
Joseph, Kenny.
Hello. Adultery and fornication, you don't pray, on your marks, get set, go. Your problem is you go there for a sleepover and think would you control your feelings? Feelings are not what you think, feelings are dangerous.
Very dangerous.
Joseph, the righteous one, realize good here, we don't need what? Prayer, we need Tarantino, on your marks, get set, go. You must learn to meet in public places, private places, private things can happen any minute, anytime. End up repenting, God, I will never do it again, you repeat again, repeat, repeat, you do pull or seven times. So Joseph ran away, even Paul said flee, fornication. All other sins, he never said flee, but the fornication, adultery, said flee. So what you hear anything about romance? Where's? Hey. Now, Joseph runs away from sin, but there is an evidence of a sin he didn't do. I've told people that there are plenty stories which are false, which have true evidence.
Right.
Especially those issues like they are dating, they are dating, they are dating, some of them, they have proof. Because why, maybe they will be talking together, they go home together, they buy each other this and that, you know, they post each other. And you don't have to rush into conclusion, Joseph had the proof of adultery that he didn't do.
Oh, your past God.
The proof was there because he ran away. So when the husband came, he was holding the jacket. What happened? Right, so this guy wanted to rape your wife, seize him and put him in jail. Go and take that little boy. Under arrest. Now, this is Joseph, hello, this is Joseph, who is righteous, but he is in jail. And when I say, God, I don't do anything, why these things are going wrong against me? But we have Joseph who ran away from adultery, who is in prison. Who told you that righteous people don't go through problems? Who told you, who told you? I remember this one who is standing here, when she was arrested at some point. I even tried to comfort her, it was useless. Father, I'm traumatized, I said, ah, well, nah, take it easy, every experience has a reason.
Yes.
Now, I want you to look at this. I want you to listen, Joseph was in jail, right? He became a governor from where?
From the prison.
You're not understanding me. The dreams of Joseph were fulfilled, he later became a governor. But how did he become a governor, he was coming from which place?
Prison. Prison.
He was coming from where?
Prison.
So it means good, if they was in the prison, Joseph was never going to become a governor. Are you hearing me? So there are some other prisons you have in your life, which are creating a governor in you. There is a prison of sinners, whereby you look at yourself on a mirror. You wonder why could me, me, like this, like this? Yes, you, you are in your prison, but after prison, you shall be a governor. Boys, boys, Simba, if you ever go into a situation whereby you look at yourself, you are smart, but every girl you come after, all of them, they reject you. The only woman that you can say hi to is that one you don't wanna see in your life, when she looks beg at you, you'll be like, ah. You go into a prison of sinners, where you end up getting tired of praying? Some of you, you are tired, don't worry, that prison is creating a governor.
Amen.
I wanna show you something, I wanna show you something, are you listening to me? What sent Joseph to the jail? It is because she refused to sleep with the wife of the boss. So Joseph need prison for him to become a governor. So you realize good, if Joseph had slept with the wife of Potiphar, it means that he was going to stay in the house of Potiphar forever. So you realize good, it was a trip by God, good if Joseph sleeps with the wife of Potiphar, she will be limited to the house of Potiphar. So there are some other sins you need to overcome, for you to go to the jail, then after jail, you become a governor. Your problem is every sin that is in front of you, you are eating. Every woman by the front of you, you want to make sure, that is why you are so limited. So, hello, Joseph was taken by the brothers into the pit. Into the pit, he was taken from the pit by the Ishmaelites to Egypt. To Egypt, he was taken to the hands of Potiphar. From the hands of Potiphar, he flee adultery and he went to the jail. But you realize good, the transport for Joseph to went to the jail were problems. So you realize good, sometimes as a Christian, problems are your transport to your destiny. Troubles are your transport to your destiny. You are not hearing me? Let me just tell you, there is something that I once saw. God was telling me about a certain woman who is there in Harare. That woman, when she came to Jam, she was a slender. She was a what? She was a slender. So I went for a certain service, this is where we were doing our services there, in Harare. Then I went for another service, when I was doing the Chugubu, which are Moses, you remember, right?
Yes.
Then I began to spray people into the mouth, then I said, some of you, you shall gain weight. And she gained weight. So I began to understand good, why is it this one gained, this one did not gain? God began to explain to me good, if this one had gained before, these other wrong boys were going to come after, yeah. Because of the stamina, they will say, wow, upa kilo sis. Yes, upa kilo, but you are a wrong guy. So how does God protect you from the wrong guys? He makes you slim, you not thin, such that all the bad boys will say, I don't want this. Then when it's the time for you to be married, you gain your weight and your right husband will come. So you realize good, problems are your transport to your destiny. Say, problems. You are my transport to my destiny.
My destiny.
This is my destiny, I was supposed to minister in South Africa, how did I come here? Poverty, problems, politics, attacks, everything, they brought me here, I thought it is suffering, it was not only suffering, it was my transport to my destiny. Joseph was transported to Egypt by?
Problems.
He came out of the hands of Potiphar, into the jail by? Then in the jail, he interpreted dreams, and Pharaoh ended up saying, I want that guy, he must come and prophesy to me and interpret my dream. When he interpreted the dream, he was like, oh, you, since you are the one who interpreted, come here, do the work. There is a day, even if it's gonna take time, when God is going to remember you. He will say, this daughter has been fasting for a long time, this daughter has been praying for a long time, this son has been praying for a long time, he has been giving for a long time. I wanna remember him right now, and some of you, the time is now.
Jesus.
So, what I wanna promise you, all of you under this house and online, you are remembered tonight.
Amen.
Do you know which day was Joseph remembered? He was remembered the day he received the dream. That's the day he was remembered, but it took years and years to manifest, some of you, it might take two, three, four years, but tonight is your day to be remembered. We are about to pray and close, let's, everyone, let's stand up.
Oh, yes.
We are about to pray and close now, everyone stand up. One. I want you, I want you to be on your personal seat with God, like your mind is totally gone. This is how I pray. When I pray, I'm like a lunatic.
Oh, yes.
That is why I don't usually like to pray with people. Because I know when I pray, sometimes I make myself to look crazy, to show God that I am useless before his presence, and my prayers work so much. So I want you to go into a mood where you say, God, I am here, I know it might not be tomorrow, but tonight I am going to receive my stuff. And in the future, you are going to unveil them by the name of Jesus. Are you ready? Lift up your hands to heaven. Listen. When you open your heart to God, your body begins to be lighter. That touch, okay, Pastor Rod, when Joseph dreamed, tomorrow, did he wake up with anything? Have you ever noticed with all the services, when you say receive, you assume nothing has happened? Same as Joseph, when he dreamt a dream, he woke up like just a guy, a random one, and even after years, he was still the same. This is the same thing which is going to happen with you. After this, you may look random, but you are not random anymore, your six days of prayers. My people online, this is your night of instant miracles. That money is coming, that job is coming, restoration is coming, in the name of... In the name of...
Jesus.
Unto us, a child is born. This is Isaiah saying, unto us, a child is born, but the person who shall give baby to the child is not even born. It's not even in his generation, we have thousands and thousands of years to come, for the mother and the father to be born, but to Isaiah, the child is already born. Your car is here in the name of Jesus, your marriage is here in the name of Jesus. Let me say this, unto your family, a wedding has been granted.
Jesus.
Unto your life, a car has been granted.
By the God.
You are not hearing me? Unto your family, a child is born. Do you believe in instant miracles? Lift up your hands.
Oh, yes.
Look up to heaven. Lift up your hands and worship. Amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Lift up your voices. Amen, amen. Amen, amen, amen. Amen.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen.
Lift up your eyes to the Lord, sing. Amen, amen. Amen. Open up your mouth. Amen. Lift up your voices. Amen, amen. The prayer has answered. Amen. The prayer has answered. Amen. Amen. Pharisees is broken. Amen. Amen. Can't disappear. In the mighty presence of the living God. Amen, 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 amen. The prayer has been answered. Amen. Now, lift up your hands, let's go. Amen. Instant miracles all over. Amen. Lift up your hands. One. One. Lift up your hands. By hand of the mighty living God over this house, I stretch the hand of the mighty living God over the people of Jam. We have been praying, fasting, asking, asking, crying in the name of Jesus. All problems, we judge you by the hand of the living God. Problems attacking our children. Problems attacking our healthy. Problems attacking our ministry. I wanna prophesy to you, sir. You are going where you didn't want to go. You were going where you wanted to go. You are going where, 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 wherever. Even things that are not written about you. I am prophesying, I am prophesying, I'm prophesying. In your hands, in your hands, the greater work of the living God. Lift up your hands. God, 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 marriage is over the people who are not married in this house. I speak them in the mighty name of Jesus. Every power of anti-marriage, I break your cover in the name of Jesus. Let these people be married. Lift up your hands. I release a mentor and a grace for marriage. People are watching us online right now. As you are lifting up your hands, God is depositing a grace for marriage, for marriage, for marriage, for marriage. I'm signing your paper. A debt, a debt, a debt, a debt, a debt. God, assign an angel. We need Asha Mchikadzab. Hey, God, lift up your hands, please. Lift up your hands, please. An assignment of a debt. I prophesy that debt. Ashas, be active, everyone within, within Asha team, please help the people. You know what? I want to prophesy something about a debt. When God gives a debt, nobody can go against it. Am I right? Am I right? Lift up your hands. Give me a pen and a paper. Where, where can I get it? A pen and a paper, be very quick, be very quick. Lift up your hands, lift up your hands, lift up your hands. You guys who are here, stretch your hands towards me. A pen and a paper, let's, let, let that be first. Alright, thank you so much. Twenty-five. Debts. Father, I pray for the release of debts, 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 debt. Debts, 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 different type of debts in the mighty name of Jesus. On this altar. Debts be allocated, debts be allocated, debts be allocated. Lobola debts, waiting debts, lobola debts, waiting debts, lobola debts, waiting debts, lobola debts, waiting debts. I release this grace all over the world. All the people who are not married and you are struggling with marital issues. You are struggling in your love life. I release debts, I release debts, I release debts. There is a debt which has been written for you. You must wait for the time of the living God, for it is cars. Cars, 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 cars. Father, I pray for the different types of cars that your people are supposed to be driving. The people who partner with the gospel, the people who tithe, the people who do a lot in the ministry, the people who helps the poor, the people who works in the ministry in the name of Jesus. Present worship. What each other says now, what each other. There is somebody amongst you who has that grace of cars. Now, what each other says? Now, God, present worship, open up for them so that they can drive their own cars, so that they can be rich enough. I need Ashas, present worship. May you be given the types of cars that you wish to drive. Even the people who are in the, or online watching us. If you are believing God for a car, I am praying for you as I'm praying here. Present worship. I pray that the God of heaven may not leave you just walking in the mighty name of Jesus. Live, just hold somebody by your side. Just, yeah, 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 Ashas, we need you more here. The grace for cars, the grace for cars, the grace for cars. Say, my future.
My future.
Now carry a car. I am, I am not a pedestrian. I am not a pedestrian. I'm a driver. I'm not a pedestrian. I'm a driver. I'm not a pedestrian. I'm a driver. My fastings must produce. My fastings must produce. My fastings must produce. My fastings must produce. My prayers must produce. My prayers must produce. My prayers must produce. My prayers must produce. Whatever I pray for, I receive it. Whatever I pray for, I receive it. I take it. I receive it. I take it. I receive it. What each other says, who tapped the grace who share? You, you, do you know that there is, if you focus in your family, in your family, you shall be the richest? It's a prophecy. She's very, very rich, this one. That is why the devil is following her, because she, he knows the future. This one. Say, God, I am here. I prayed, I fasted. Where is my result? I wanna receive what belongs to me. Tonight, tonight, I wanna receive what belongs to me. What belongs to me. Tonight, I wanna receive what belongs to me. My family must see God through me. They mustn't laugh about you. There is nothing to laugh about. There is nothing to laugh about. Facebook, are you hearing me? Say, people mustn't laugh about me. People mustn't laugh about me. There is nothing to laugh about me. There is everything to celebrate about me. My prayers has been answered. Say, I am fine. I am fine. I am fine. Now concentrate. Those who were praying for jobs, go and find jobs. Those who have been praying for health, you are healed now. Your body is receiving healing from now and you shall not be the same again. Come here, present worship. Now. Live, live. I want all of you to make a circle here. Make it grow, make it grow. Charles, try to go somewhere. Right. Now, stretch your hands towards me. I shall walk as much as I can. The Lord prepared me so much and deposited a lot of answers for different people. So when you see me passing by you, take what you want. Just say it. You are not taking it from me. The Lord just deposited in me for you, so it's coming from who?
From the Lord.
God. I walk. Whatever I carry as an apostle, every deposit, claim it. Claim it. Claim it. Claim it. Claim it. Claim it, claim, 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 claim. Make a claim now, make a claim, make a claim. As you are claiming, something is going to happen to your life. In the mighty name of Jesus, we carry it. If you are blessed, you can bless. If you carry it, claim it, claim it, claim it. Claim it, claim it, claim it, claim it. In the name of Jesus. 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 Receive, receive what you prayed for. 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 Double portion, 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 double portion. Wakapresaka, tapariakos. Double portion, double portion, double portion, double portion. Be remembered, grace, grace, double portion, 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 double portion. In the name of Jesus. What you prayed for, say I want it two times. Lift up your two, two, two fingers, two times. Say I want it two times. What you prayed for, a double portion of the prophetic upon your life in the mighty name of Jesus. My people on Facebook. My people on Facebook. God, protect your child and protect the gift. The grace of protection, even on every child who is here. I wanna show you. I wanna show you. You see these kids? They are going to prophesy while their eyes are open. In this church, there is a day that is coming when you try to stop them. I will tell you don't. The revival is what? It started. Jesus name.
In the name of Jesus.
Stretch out your hands towards me. Do them like this. To me, to me. Do the same, 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 do the same. It's a need in the body of Christ. Stretch your hands towards me. Thou shalt prophesy, your eyes open. God is now settling your spirits for that. Your eyes open, thou shalt prophesy. Thou shalt prophesy, your eyes open. Thou shalt prophesy, your eyes open. Thou shalt prophesy, your eyes open.
Thank you, Jesus.
Say I'm a prophet.
I am a prophet.
Of my life, come here. Standing in between these things. I want you to confess this. Say, I shall prophesy. My eyes open, 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 my eyes open. I shall prophesy, my eyes open. I shall see into the future. I shall see into the future.
In the name of Jesus.
One prophet, you want it, sure. Visions of the night, visions of the day. Visions when you are worshiping, visions everywhere. By the name of Jesus. One day, we shall take these ones. We make a circle, we sing for them. The prophetic spirit comes upon them. They will tell you the future. They will tell you the everything.
In the name of Jesus.
And I'm praying, there is something that I'm trying to figure out. Because when I saw you, I heard about three prophets. So I don't know, is it within your family or within your church? Pray that God can reveal to you.
Oh, yes.
Love God for the love that you have for God. May God protect you and enlarge your territory.
Oh, yes.
In Jesus' name.
In the name of Jesus.
Say, my life.
My life.
After this.
After this.
Is never going to be the same. My life.
My life.
After this.
After this.
Is never going to be the same.
It's not gonna be the same.
Come. Give me what? Come here. Must do this. Open up it. You must put water into your hands. She must wash her eyes like this. You start asking for us today. Then wash your hands like, your eyes, I mean. Like. Shampoo for your hands. Do the same. Wash like.
Apostle, she says on the date for marriages, she also saw 20 December. She saw now, just told me now, 20 December. Clap hands for Jesus.
You wash them like. Wash like. Put another water. Love Jesus. Give me what? My people on Facebook, it is well with you. The season is now. The time is now. The season is now. Revival is here. The move of God is here. The power is here. God is here. Open up your mouth and begin to pray. Zarakamano shakapa. Liboriandere basande. Revival is here. Zezemadea rekakataba. Open up your mouth. Open up your mouth. Zasariandokosande. Open up your mouth. Liboriandakata. Yakatakatianda. Zaleketiandoroba. Mazikotia reketeanda. Reketi, my eyes are open. In the name of Jesus. Mazukotiababa. Maliboriakasianderebakata. A new season, a new season. Yete tekeria rabadev. I declare. I declare a new season, a new season. Transformation. Say it's my season. Zekatataba rabba. It's my time. Zasaradebarakatea. Reketianda. A new season. Arresikatiyamato. Mantukaria bababa. Yeresian. This is the prophetic season. In the name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus. Arikatiya harasa. Zaza. Joben! Zadelebayande. Zalekasianda. Lirokosabadema. Rababababa. Ah, ah, my Father. Thank you for the new season. Thank you for the new season. In the mighty name of Jesus. Alechatiya rekesiabadaba. Yantukaskarianda. Leprosakateanda. Libodobariande. Rechateandoanda. Restariandakata. Yeah. We have received it in the name of Jesus. Whoever is watching us via television, watch us, receive it. Watching us tonight, receive it in the name of Jesus. Receive the new season. Receive the new season. A season of miracles, a season of signs and wonders. As it is written, the signs shall follow them that believe. We are for signs and wonders. We are for signs and wonders. Yeah. Ah, rababa, rabababa. Ya rababa, ya rabababa. Ya rabababa, ya rababa, ya rababa. You shall receive power after the Holy Ghost is come upon you. Receive, 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 receive. Ya dada, ya dada, ya dada. Ya rakataba, ya rakata. A new season, a season of miracles, a season of wonders. The signs shall follow them that believe. The signs shall follow them that believe. They shall lay hands on the sick and they shall be healed. They shall decree a thing and shall be established. This is a new season. This is a new season. This is a prophetic season. In the name of Jesus. You shall not remain the same. Your life shall not remain the same. Your business shall not remain the same. In the mighty name of Jesus. Adadabaya rakataba. Yereketebada. Ratchokosiabada. Reketeteria riandorobasianda. Lebadebarianda. Rise, rise, arise. In your business arise, in the name of Jesus. Barasiketianda ya yerakatebadema. Liikatiandere, rikatiandereba. Zebadibarianda. Yerekesianda rabba. Yerekesiando. Yekachokorianda. By the Spirit of God. The Spirit of God is upon me. The Spirit of the Lord is upon me. Itariandarabakatakata. Rekatekatianda. Ah, yeah, yeah. Barasiketianda, barusiandeketiamba. The angels of this commission, they are here. They are here. Angels of this commission, angels of this commission. Jacob said, I did not know that the Lord is here. The Lord is here. The Lord so many mighties his name. The Lord mighty in battle. The Lord so many mighty. Mighty to this, mighty to, mighty to give, mighty to deliver. The mighty God is here. Mighty God of wonders, God of miracles, God of tears. It's the same yesterday. According to Psalm 44, we have heard your God, our forefathers have told us the deeds that you did in the days of all. In the name of Jesus. This is Mount Zion. This is Mount Zion. This is Mount Zion. This is Mount Zion. Receive, receive, receive. Power, 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 power. I am full of power by the Spirit of the Lord and freedom of power. The Spirit of the Lord is upon me. The Spirit of the Lord is upon me. He is here, he is here. Somebody pray. Rechata, rechatabada. Riandokosianderebakata. Ribobababa, ribobababa, ribobababa. Jepova. Zebabababa, rebabababa, rebabababa, rebababa. His presence is here. His power is here. The power of his presence, the presence of his power. The power of his presence, the presence of his power, the presence of the Lord. The angels of this commission, the angels of this commission. Jepova, jepova, jepova. Jepova, the prophetic grace, the apostolic grace, the pastoral grace. Jekke, jekke, jekke. Ya baba, my Father, my Father. The God of my Father, the God of my Father. He is here. Ya ra da da ba, ya re ke sa da. Ya tro ko sa da. Ya cho ko sia. Ya ra ba ba ba. Ya le ke sia. Re ha ka ba ya. Ya ba de ba ri ada. Angels of this commission ascend and descend. Angels of this commission. In the name of Jesus. This is where angels ascend and descend. This is Mount Zion. Upon Mount Zion, they shall be delivered. And the children of Jacob, they shall possess their possessions. This is Mount Zion. This is Mount Zion. Where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty. Where the Spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty. Say, "Jesus, you came to set the country free." "Jesus, you came to set the country free." Send them free! Send them free! Send them free! Send them free! A new season. In this new season, in the name of Jesus. Ah, ya, ya rakata. Ya re ke ta ya. Ya re ke ta ya. A new season. A new season. A new season. Jehovah will not resist us. A new season of fire. A new season of fire. Even in Rastafarian, a new season of fire. A new season. Even Tibetan, a new season. In Kaptown Pastor Eddie, receive a new season. Whether you are watching us on Facebook, receive the new season. The prophetic season. In the name of Jesus.
Oh, yes. The God of glory.
Just lift up hands.
Oh, yes.
Lift up your hands. Okay. Okay. Lift up your hands. Father, in Jesus' name, we thank you.
Jesus.
We thank you. Just say, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Just say, "Thank you."
Thank you, Lord.
Just thank God now.
Thank you, Lord. Father, we thank you.
Thank you.
Father, we thank you. Father, we thank you. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, mighty God. Thank you, Lord.
Thank mighty Jesus.
Thank you, Lord. For you saved your world. It is a good thing Thank you, Lord. To give thanks to the Lord. It is a good thing to give thanks to the Lord. We thank you, mighty God. We thank you, mighty God. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus. Lord, we are grateful. Thank you, mighty God. In the name of Jesus. It is a good thing to give thanks to the Lord. We thank you, mighty God, for what you are doing in this house.
Your life shall never be the same again.
Amen.
Continue like this.
Yes.
One day, the world shall be shocked.
Amen.
Are you listening to me?
Yes.
One day, the world shall be shocked. You shall be a shock to the world. They will come to see the amazement of the Lord on you. You are hearing me?
Yes, sir.
Say, "It is well"
It is well.
"With my soul."
With my soul.
Say, "I am fine."
I am fine.
"I am fine."
I am fine.
"I'm okay." "It is well."
It is well.
"Everything is okay."
Everything is okay.
"In light." So, all the people are watching us online there. All the grace that we have in this house is the same grace that you have.
Amen.
After this, maintain the levels.
Amen.
How many times prayer a day?
At least.
Three times, at least, three?
Times.
Three?
Times.
After this, it looks like you didn't do nothing. You didn't do anything. Trust the process.
Amen.
After Joseph dreamt, did he wake up tomorrow morning?
No, sir.
But watch out. The Lord will show off.
Amen. Amen.
Huh?
Amen.
One day is one day. Sing not, fear not. God is with you. God is with you. So let's just lift up our hands as I close. Father, in the name of Jesus, I thank you so much for your family, for every soul that is gathered here online or in this house. I am praying that as we close, your spirit remain in custody of us. Protect us, be with us. Protect our souls and save us from thy holy fire so that we may continue to serve the living God in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
So Wednesday, we are going to meet those who wanna come. We are going to have, every Wednesday, we'll be having this session. So, next Wednesday, I'll be with you. You didn't come this week, right? So you'll be here, right? You're on program Wednesday, right? And Pastor Chipo, Wednesday, you're on program, the two of you, right? May the Lord bless you. And this is the end of this program. You can now go and eat purple. Eat meat, eat what you want. But don't forget, from one December to five, it's fasting again.
Yes.
So, enjoy now, those problems are coming, good problems. Shalom.
Shalom. Thank you and God bless you all.